And so I will be chairing tonight's meeting. We, we have a brief note about the logistics for the, for the meeting. If anyone has, is participating remotely, please set your first and last name on your, on your screen. So you can do it. Anyone who seeks to address the council, please start by stating your name and where you live. If you have a comment about a specific agenda item, please limit your comments to two minutes and keep them germane. If you wish to speak, you must be called on by the chair. And for all comments, counselor Bate will be helping us by keeping track of the time. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Is the agenda acceptable to everybody? Yes, Donna, you had an item you wanted to add.
I would like to add a discussion around the Public Safety Authority. And it's a proposed budget, just go into the ballot in March.
So should that go like under exec, under other business or just before other business?
Yeah, that'd be fine. It'd be part of other business or right before they'd be fine.
Okay, sounds good. Oh.
Before we go to executive session, so between nine and 10.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense. That way, whatever happens, yep, okay. Any other comments? Yes, Lauren.
I request that we take items B, the response to allegation of open meeting and ADA violation. And item D, school street closure from the consent agenda into the regular agenda to allow for comment.
Okay, sounds good. Hearing all that, and if there's no other.
Well, you're still approving the agenda.
We're still approving the agenda, yes. Hearing no other comments, the agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. As always, we ask that you keep your comments to two minutes in length. And I will start with the people who are in the room who want to be heard, and then we'll go from there to the, anyone who's appearing remotely. John.
Good evening, John Snell, First Avenue. First off, I want to thank all of you for running a safe election. It was great. I'm here just to briefly talk about the farmer's market. Since we just had the last of the summer markets, we ran 26 weekly markets this summer. With a pool of over 80 vendors, there were over a million dollars worth of sales in those markets. And I'm really proud to say there were also 600 plus SNAP and crop cash transactions that totaled over $23,000. That's a lot of food for people in need. This one amazed me. We count everybody who comes into the market and we had over 52,000 people attend in that summer session. It was up 10% from last year. We, prior to that, had had nine bi-weekly winter markets. Who went to a winter market? Right.
I think I'm, I think I did.
We, we had quite a few people there. We had 42 vendors in the pool. And did over $100,000 worth of sales. We only canceled one winter market. And the wind that day was just brutal. We couldn't do it. So that's pretty amazing that we actually had nine of them. I want to thank the state in particular, and also DPW and the Montpelier Police Department for really supporting us being at 133 State. There were times when we needed that active support and we had no trouble getting it from all three of them. I am pleased to say that this winter, we will be back at Caledonia Spirits. This time around, we were there two years ago and it was pretty crowded and tight and COVID weary. This time, we're going to be both inside and outside in the new heated patio. We already have over 50 vendors who want to be there. Will be there the first and third Saturdays of the month, starting in December, running through the end of April. From 10 o'clock in the morning to 1 o'clock. So it'll be really a great offering. And I also just wanted to say that one of the polls we took at the summer market tried to query, when you're at the market, do you shop anywhere else in town? 93% of the people who come to our market regularly shop elsewhere in town when they come in for that market. So I'm thrilled.
That's great news because when I, when, when you moved all the way down to the other end of State Street, that was my concern.
Yeah, it's interesting. We didn't query, I don't have the numbers, but we queried, how did you get there? And a lot of people are walking, so.
When you see cars all along State Street, it's just amazing. It's a much better location. Can we, can you send us that? I'd love to have that data in electronic document for reference.
I'd be happy to. Thank you very much for your support.
Thanks, John. Richard.
Richard Shear from Loomis Street, and I'm going to maximize my two minutes by asking you to help me with my address. I want to talk about guns. And last time I was here, addressing you was right after the red flag incident, actually. Bill, could you give us a little history on our charter change vote on assault weapons?
I can, but this is your two minutes, so I don't want to take up your time.
Okay, well, I was asking if I could pause and you could at least inform the people that we did at one time have.
We did at one time have a charter change that would have banned the possession of loaded, or the carry of loaded firearms, I think it said. And it did pass the voters here and did not get it. Well, got a couple of hearings in committee, but never passed out of committee and never was, there was never a vote taken on it.
So it was essentially tabled.
Yes, by the legislature.
Now Connor, Burlington, I believe, has passed a resolution asking that their similar ban that was also tabled, I think it was bands in the plural, be reconsidered by the legislature in the next legislature. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, it's, it's passed the Board of Health. It's been referred to the Public Safety Committee and the Burlington City Council, I think will take it up, up in the next couple of weeks here.
My request is because it was tabled and never really adjudged, you know, on the state level. Would it be possible for council before the budget hearings begin to at least hold, put, put it on the agenda and let's see how the public feels about approaching the state on something that passed, albeit years ago. But, or perhaps putting it on the ballot for town meeting day. That's all I'm asking tonight is that council consider reopening this discussion for the public.
Okay, thanks. Steve.
Even I know better than that. Steve Whitaker, Montpelier. The definite America, America's most mismanaged small town capital. Definition of insanity is doing the same thing over again and expecting a different result. After repeated warnings that you've got a homelessness task force packed with people who have a conflict of interest. The director of Good Samaritan, the director of another way, staff per paid staff for those organizations. And that same task force has not completed the work that they were assigned to do in the first six months, three and a half years ago. And you just reappointed the same characters for two-year terms instead of putting some new blood on there. That's insanity. I believe you got a consent agenda item to give $40,000 to Good Samaritan for the street outreach. They got five, four, five million dollars from the Housing and Conservation Trust Fund. They can afford their own outreach staff to, to fill out their affluent park. We got toilet paper hanging in the trees, that public restroom, that open nature, public restroom over there that nobody wants to do anything about. The public restroom committee hasn't met in over a year since they were created. And yet this transit center bathrooms are still closed an hour and a half or two and a half hours during the middle of the day. In violation of the lease of our building. So that's been brought to your attention repeatedly and Frazier's done nothing to enforce the lease with Green Mountain Transit. They fixed the curbs on Rialto Bridge. The curbs are even worse on Langdon Street. Garbage overflowing on the holiday weekends stacked up two feet above the garbage cans. The garbage contractor selectively choosing which cans to empty or overlooking cans and leaving them, you know, to overflow. Restrooms. City Hall. If you want photos of the human waste piling up and the, in the, you know, toilet paper hanging in the trees, if that'll help you. You know, it's $2 a photo and $2 a minute for my time to get it to you, just like the game you're playing with public records. Later topic on the discussion. Enforcement, quality of life enforcement. The trucks that come through, the diesel trucks especially, but the little hot rods, straight piped. That should be an enforcement priority with the police department. You know, to run around intentionally backfire on your engine or blowing out clouds of black smoke out of your diesel is just, it's toxic. It's, it's a public disturbance.
Are you talking about commercial vehicles or just people's personal vehicles?
People's vehicles designed to make a nuisance out of it. That's my two minutes, I guess.
Thank you.
But I object to the two minutes and I will continue to object to the two minutes.
And just to address the restroom committee, I know city staff put on Facebook and Front Porch Forum calls for more applications. As we discussed, the restroom committee a couple of meetings ago. The thought was, you know, it goes beyond the issue of just the unhoused here. So looking for members from the business community, other folks in the community and hopefully, hopefully get that meeting going either late next week or the week after. So.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else in person who wants to speak? Okay, online, I see Peter Kelman with his hand up.
Thanks, Jack. Peter Kelman, Montpelier, Mountain Dew Street. I just wanted to congratulate Mayor Watson, who is unfortunately ill, and Connor Casey, a council member on their election to the state senate and the state house respectively. And I would like to urge them individually to very soon announce that they will be leaving their posts and when. Then I hope that the council, or perhaps just Bill Frazier as the city manager, will use whatever communications vehicles are available to explain to the public what the procedures are to fill those positions on an interim basis, if any, until a town meeting day when we can elect replacements. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, would you turn on the closed captions? I cannot hear this audio system and I can't read his lips in this arena with the light on.
Is it possible to do that?
It would also help if you put one of the microphones near one of the speakers that is serving the laptop.
Did, did people in the audience not hear what I said?
No, we heard you.
Everyone heard you just fine.
Thanks.
Except Mr. Whitaker.
I'm sorry, his, everything he says is unintelligible to him, so.
I will just remind everyone in attendance that the, the rules of procedure require a person to be recognized by the chair before addressing the council. Okay, why don't we, why don't you keep trying to get, get that to, to work and I'll move on with the agenda while we do that. We are on the consent agenda with the exception of items B and D. Is there a motion?
I'm going to accept the consent agenda without changes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we've adopted the consent agenda. Now that gets us to item B on the consent agenda, response to, or item B, which was on the consent agenda. Response to allegation of open meeting law violation and ADA violation. Do you want to start us off?
Sure. We received an allegation from Mr. Whitaker, violation of open meeting law and ADA violation. It was referred to our attorneys, Michael Tarrant, who drafted a response and advised that I should issue it in order to be timely. And I requested that it be placed on the agenda for council ratification or overruling, if you so choose. The decision was drafted by Mr. Tarrant. And it speaks for itself. It's written, it was sent to the applicant. The, the person who complained. I'll note that we'll hear more later, but the individual has asked that we send things to attorneys and we did. And now apparently we have to get his approval for which attorney we send them to because the one we sent him to wasn't sufficient. So I would just mention that before he's about to weigh in with that opinion.
And could you, you know, for the benefit of the people who are here or are watching, could you hit the high points of what the?
Sure. So essentially, and it had to do, some of it with the closed captioning that you just heard, which is, I'm certain the reason why it was just raised. That he alleged that we were, well, I, I'm sure he'll speak for himself and it's written in the, in the decision. That we had violated the open meeting law and by not providing closed captioning because the open meeting law was connected to ADA and the ADA required it us to have closed captioning as per an FCC ruling. And the opinion of the attorney was number one, Mr. Whitaker had no standing to bring this issue because he had not issued any personal complaint or claimed to be harmed or in any way, which of course now he's going to allege that he was. And then secondly, that the FCC regulations do not apply to the city anyway. And that because we have closed captioning, if anybody watching on YouTube, that even if we went to the merits, that we were providing that for a person. So presumably we can get, hopefully we can get the closed captioning here. But that's, that's the crux of the issue. And as I said, those, that opinion was drafted for me by the attorney and using his words. And I just mentioned that because of the pretty personal and untenable email, which is now a public record that Mr. Whitaker sent, claiming that I was being criminal and manipulative and that Jerry's kid had gone to the dark side, referring to attorney Tarrant. So.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions by any member of the council? Okay, I'll recognize you to make a comment.
Well, first of all, open meeting violations need to come to the body, not to the city manager. So your city manager is confusing a public records request on which he is the head of the agency in, as if he is entitled to privately consult with a lawyer and resolve this. A public open meeting law violation requires the body to meet within 10 days and address the issue. And either make a finding that there is or isn't an issue. But the sloppy logic and the sloppy lawyering that is evidenced in that memo and the issue related to public records, related to being able to come into the place of business and view the videos of the meetings with closed captions and take a copy away, that was ignored entirely. So this is an example of the mismanagement of the city and the city's public records. And in this case, an open meeting law violation, which should have brought the whole council together to address, not a fait accompli attempted almost criminally to be passed through on the consent agenda. So I, I can't make excuses for him, but you can hear why this, this is probably a more complex matter for another day. I would suggest that you probably need to well, I mean, we can take it up again or some of the related surrounding issues at the public records discussion later in the agenda. But I believe I spoke to Kim Cheney about it. He says, I think that the council's going to need to appoint a committee to do their own fact finding of issues. But the way this was handled and to try to slip it through on a consent agenda without ever meeting to address the issue is, was illegal and absurd.
I may, thank you. Yeah, just to that point, the, the open meeting, the, the allegation of open meeting law actually requires no response. In fact, it says if there's no response given within 10 days, it's deemed to be denied. So we could have simply not responded at all and been denied. The, our city attorney suggested instead, so it was upon his advice that I issued a decision. And without the council, so that we gave the courtesy of a response and reasoning. And I insisted that it be brought to the council for final ratification so that the council could approve it and it wasn't just the manager making a final decision. So I appreciate there's a difference of opinion, but again, the law requires no response to deny a request.
Thanks, Bill. Any, any, I don't see anyone else in the room who is seeking to make a comment. Is there anyone participating remotely who is, who would like to make a comment before we proceed? Okay, is there a motion from anyone on the council? Donna?
I'll make a motion that we deny the violation of the open meeting law.
And that's, and ratify the manager's decision?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion by members of the council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion's passed. Moving on to item D, school streets closure. Kurt, do you want to give an overview?
I'm Kurt Monica, Public Works Director.
Congratulations, by the way. Excellent, excellent choice.
Yeah, so I'm, yeah, just briefly, just very excited for the opportunity to take the reins here. There's a lot of challenges for the city and the department. for the city and the department, but.
The excitement will wear off.
Yeah. But I'm up for it. So School Street, School Street has had multiple water leaks over the past few months. We've had about five, I believe, five repairs on that street in the last two months. So my staff has come to me and expressed concern about being able to maintain that water line throughout the winter. When the frost goes in the ground, it tends to further disrupt fragile piping. And so we are essentially moving this forward as an emergency water main replacement. We're looking at about 475 feet of pipe that will address the worst sections of the main where we've made all these repairs.
Say which section that is.
Sure, yeah. This is between Main Street and St. Paul Street. We are not going to be in the intersection of either of those streets. So there's a fire hydrant that we're going to use for temporary connection points from, you know, between those intersections that we'll be tying into. So traffic will be able to flow around Cedar Street to St. Paul, have reached out to the schools. They're aware and supportive of the work and provided a newsletter to the schools and they've distributed that out to the parents. The drop off for, for kids will be the same, just a different route, won't be able to turn off from Main Street to get to the school, to the Union Elementary School, but you will still be able to access from St. Paul and from Cedar down school. So this project, we will, because it kind of came on, because it did come on very quickly, we don't have time to do a formal bid and get this constructed before winter really sets in. So we have a contractor on Town Hill that's doing a similar project, a water main with the same diameter pipe and material. So we're proposing a change order to that project in order to expedite the work. School Street will be closed for a month. We did get a slight delay from the notice I put out. We're planning to now start on Wednesday, November 16th. And it will go, the road closure will go through, you know, mid to end of December, depending on how everything goes.
Will local traffic be able to get in, people that have to get in?
Yes, local traffic for residents and businesses will be maintained with some delays. The sidewalks will be open for kids and pedestrians walking to school. And we do plan to open the road up to traffic at night after the workday ends.
Any council questions from members of the, Carrie?
Yeah, thank you. So obviously this work needs to be done. I'm glad you're doing it. As a resident of St. Paul Street, this is going to have a huge impact on our neighborhood. And especially if the plan for the school pickup and drop off is St. Paul Street, is that correct?
So there's three alternate routes.
What, do you know what the school is going to tell people to do?
We provided the detour map to the school and it provided all three routes as options. We didn't dedicate one street.
Pickup and drop off is supposed to be in the same locations? Just how they get.
Right, right, right. And so if people are accessing it by coming down St. Paul Street, then instead of School Street, they're going to be lining up on St. Paul Street. And as it is getting in and out of School Street during that pickup and drop off time is sometimes completely impossible when, especially when there's snow and there's cars parked and everything. So I'm not complaining. It'll be okay, but I did see the letter that, of notification that I assume went to people on School Street. I didn't see it in my mailbox. Am I correct that it didn't go to people on St. Paul Street?
No, we only did direct mail notices to School Street.
So I would, I would request that this kind of one-on-one notification go to School Street, also Loomis Street, because that's going to be highly impacted by the pickup and drop off. And, you know, at the, at the minimum, I think, to let people know, because it's going to have a huge impact.
Yeah, sure, we can do that.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments from members of the council? Was this gentleman? I think there's one person here in the room. Why don't you come out to the microphone?
Steve Stauffer, I'm representing School Street, 28 School Street, the mangy's bread. Thank you very much and congratulations. We're happy to have you aboard. And I know it's been a bear on that street for the last couple of months and let's hope this fixes it. My main concern and concerns of some of the other businesses on School Street is, is not necessarily the access, because I think we can work around that and that seems to be already in the plan. It's more related to the what it says that will be notified with a notice of 24 hours for planned water shutdowns. Is that a complete shutdown of access to water for anything on School Street for a period of time? Or that's, you'll forgive me, but my, I thought that this was going to be a discussion of the, of the council. So I was going to listen and then chime in. So thank you very much for, for what you've done. But our concern is that if we're, you know, it just happens to fall into our absolute busiest month of the year. And our concern is that if we have water shutdowns during the day, then we can't operate. And people need rolls. That's, we need rolls for Thanksgiving and we're hoping to make them again this year. So as far as the, the, the water shutdowns are concerned, does that mean complete shutdown to, to those buildings and those residences and businesses on School Street?
Sorry, just so we could be heard. So we are really minimizing shutdowns by using the fire hydrants as connection points. But there will be at least one time where we have to turn off each building to switch the water service over. I think we can work with you. If it's not freezing, we might be able to provide you temporary water. And I'm happy to talk with you offline about.
Yeah, that'd be great. I realize that it would be an opportunity to chat with you and add to your many other things. But yeah, that's something that we can discuss, because there are other businesses that are concerned about that. They simply can't operate if they're, they have no water, if by law have shut down.
Right. The worst case, it would be one day.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, as long as it's not, you know, 20 below or something crazy like that, you never know. Then we can keep water above ground. We could probably make accommodations.
Okay, so we'll talk at some other point then about.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
While you're up there, another question, you're mentioning schools, just happened to think of this. Do you know how school buses will be coming in? Can they make those turns from Cedar? Because normally they come down school too.
Yeah, they're probably coming down from Loomis. We did plan to, to block off some of the parking a lot near the intersections to improve the turning radiuses for the buses.
For the buses.
So we're making accommodations.
So you and the school have worked out a bus plan?
Yeah, I don't know that, all the details, but we did bring that up in our discussions with the school and they're comfortable that they could manage with that, with those alternate routes.
Thank you.
So will then the school notify you and you notify residents of where the school buses are? If there's a change?
Yeah, I did confirm with the school today that there is no change for the actual drop off, pick up location for the buses themselves. As far as the routes, I don't know all the details about which way they're coming in. But for the parents, that won't really change. Unless maybe that, yeah, I don't, I don't have the details on the schools. I would trust them to make those accommodations.
There was another time when the school buses had to line up way over on Loomis. And Liberty, actually Liberty got, got marked off to help the school bus flow. And it was part of the construction with the playground and everything. And so I just thought there was a lot of public notice that the school bus routes were changing as well as other things. And so I just think it'd be helpful for them to know if that's true. So maybe we can ask the school to let you, let people know that it's not really yours, but theirs.
Right.
Yeah, I can speak for them about that.
Thanks, Kurt. I think there's.
So my question is, is.
Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you identify yourself?
Yes, my name is John Boucher and I own the business at 30 Schools hurt. And my question, you, you mentioned by access to the residents, businesses and so forth. What about service access such as fuel deliveries, garbage, that kind of stuff? My intention is to actually use the back of our parking lot, go through the church, the everyday in and out sort of quick things, but I'm a little concerned about the larger deliveries and so forth.
Yes, we can take accommodations.
Okay.
Again, I think that's best if I, or they would do directly.
You bet, you bet. Okay, it's not going to be terrible and just thank you for taking, tackling the project. It's, hopefully have that.
Thanks.
Steve Whitaker again. Just that first block is probably 20 or 30 of the unmetered spots where people working in town park their cars all the time. So I would ask that you make some other provision for unmetered, some spots in one of the lots somewhere for folks to use for that month. That's, that's a key piece for people who can't go feed a meter every couple of hours. You're not supposed to do that anyway. But also that, is this only going to be paving one stretch underneath the pipe of, you know, two or three feet wide? Or is this basically ripping up the whole street? Because that section, that first on both sides of School Street, that first block, the sidewalks are some of the most unsafe in the city, two and a half inch trip hazards, gaps, et cetera. And if we're contracting out and getting, I'm also concerned with the timing that the asphalt plant is going to be closed by the time this construction is finished. So we're, we're going to have dirt and potholes like we've had for the last month till spring. These are issues that weren't addressed in anything that I've read. So parking sidewalks, paving should be fleshed out here.
Thank you.
Happy to address those items, Stephen. So for parking, there, there will not be parking on the street. We did make accommodations in our plan for teachers that park there. As far as the general public parking in those spots and there's a lot of other unmetered areas throughout the city, but we do not plan to make designated spaces available for those displaced other than the teachers. I did, I should have mentioned that this is really phase one of the water replacement on School Street. We don't, it's, we're, we're going to be into the cold weather within a month and we don't have time to do. School Street has two water mains to start with. We're replacing just the worst one. So we're going to have to come back, finish the work in the intersections, switch all the remaining services from the second water main and then abandon that one. So a lot more work. We don't have enough time to do the full scope. We're really just addressing where the pipe is really failing. So we're not going to pave the whole street because we have, going to have more work to do next summer. The asphalt plant, I've heard initially is going to close this Friday in Berlin. But you can get mix out of asphalt mix out of Burlington later. And then worst cases, you can get it from, you know, other states, you know, almost through most of the winter. So we will just be patching the trench for the water main. We're not going to pave the whole street at this time because there's a lot more work to do.
And as I understand it, you're not disturbing the sidewalks at all?
No, there's no impact to the sidewalks.
Okay, thanks. Peter Kelman?
Peter Kelman, Montpelier. I, it sounds like there's a lot of information to be shared with the public because it's not just the immediate neighborhood, but also all the, all the parents of the children who go to the elementary school. This would be a great opportunity to use this new fantastic newsletter, weekly newspaper that's coming out from DPW. It'd be a terrific opportunity to explain this to the public on a weekly basis, to explain first what's, what you guys have all talked about here and there's almost nobody here from the public, not, not just to send out notices, but sending out notices is important too. So I just wanted to, but you know, say that the new weekly DPW newsletter is fantastic and I hope that other committees will work, work with Evelyn Prim to do similar kinds of things. This is a great way to let the public know what's going on. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Any other comments or discussion before we move to a vote? Okay, is there a motion? Anybody?
Donna? Certainly, I'll make the motion that we approve the closure of the School Street.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion is passed. Now we move to item six on our agenda, outdoor recreation and economic development. Here we are. Yeah, like, yeah, I think if you have a thumb drive, it's probably easiest thing.
Thanks for having me. My name is Alec Ellsworth and I'm the Parks and Trees Director for the City of Montpelier. And the reason that I'm here is because we have an item on our strategic plan that relates to growing Montpelier's outdoor recreation economy. And we're a year into that plan and this is a status update to talk about what, what is the outdoor recreation economy in Montpelier? What have we been doing over the past year? And what lies ahead? So it's a quick presentation, probably no more than 15 minutes and happy to answer questions at the end.
Alec, just noticing the Zoom is not showing.
Yes, you need to share the screen. So I share.
Yep.
Screen. Doing it.
Look at that. Great.
Here we go. Oh, man. You all are gross at this. Beautiful. Thank you for walking me through that. So because we have a not very, but slightly different council from when I gave a presentation a little more than a year ago, I'm just going to do like a lightning background on what is the outdoor recreation economy in Montpelier, so that we're all on the same page. This is a slide, a graphic about some of the ways that outdoor recreation benefits communities. In general, outdoor recreation can be differentiated from what people think of as recreation in the sense that it's recreation is like organized sports, indoor, indoor facilities and outdoor recreation is hiking, biking, skiing, things that are outside. It's not that complicated. It's as you would expect. So we, when we think about Montpelier and look at this graphic, you think about what kind of, what kind of city we are. We're not a resort town, a place like Stowe or Killington. We're also not a place that has huge access to public lands like some places in the country or in the state do. But we are, we do have a very vibrant downtown. We are a desirable place to work, we're a desirable place to live. So the ways that outdoor rec benefits Montpelier fall a lot into really helping the main street businesses, tourism, attracting businesses, attracting quality employees who want to live in a place like Montpelier. And then attracting, you know, new residents of all types, young families, people who want to retire here and keeping people healthy. What is the, the impact of outdoor recreation? This is just a quick slide that shows a few different communities around Vermont that have been studied and the benefits that they're seeing. The, if you look at the column on the right, Kingdom Trails in Eastburg is sort of the flagship mountain bike destination for New England. And this is from 2016. So these numbers I'm sure are quite, quite different now and vastly expanded. I'm sure they're well over 100,000 visitors at this point. Significant economic gains to that small, small area. Taking a closer look at, at them, you know, if they, 100,000 people visiting Eastburg and this is the kind of money that they're spending. It's, you can, you can imagine some of the benefits. Thinking back on that last slide that are being distributed pretty widely throughout the community. This is a snapshot of the Matter of a Valley Economic Impact Study about where people spend their money when they're visiting these trail communities. So it's pretty spread between shopping, you know, eating out, bars, lodging, that kind of thing. And if you think about Montpelier, we're really well positioned to capture the, you know, these, these dollars that people are spending. We have a lot of things in place because of our vibrant downtown that allow us to capitalize on, on people visiting our city for recreation. There's a slide about sort of how we stack up against other communities. I, if you look at the right column, put number one, I put one in the number of years we've been working on this. Certainly doesn't capture all the hard work that's gone in decades of developing recreation in Montpelier, but we're really just one year into having a sort of focused effort on growing our outdoor recreation economy and creating the the connections. And I'll talk in just a second about what our strategy is, but yeah, having a focused strategy is a new, a new thing for us as part of the strategic plan. And want to credit a lot of people who've helped us put that, put, put that plan in motion. Montpelier Alive being a really key player and other partners, Trust for Public Land and the state's outdoor recreation economic collaborative program has been great as well. I would say we're a few decades behind the communities that were really on the cutting edge of this, the Matter of a Valley being, you know, the, the marquee place and then, you know, five to 10 years behind the people who are kind of riding the wave of outdoor recreation that has been happening, not just in Vermont, but across the country. I put TBD in number of users because one of the things we've done in the last year is install trail counters throughout our trail system. But that, we're, we're still coalescing that data into something meaningful and useful to present, so. Next year's status update, we'll hopefully have better numbers there. This is our trail system. This is, I was hoping to have this map for tonight to hand out, but this is just the latest mockup of our outdoor recreation brochure that's going to be around town. And in the parks, we have about twenty miles of trails, about half of that is multi-use. And then we have our four and a half mile recreation path that's accessible as well as the new accessible trail in Montpelier in Hubbard Park and a new one coming out at U32. In the winter, we have more, we have about twenty-five to thirty miles of trails stretching all the way out to East Montpelier that are available for Nordic skiing, snowshoeing and hiking. So that was the review section of the presentation. This is the, what have we been doing section? These are the three strategies that we are using to try to capture the gains of economic development through outdoor recreation. Strategy number one is telling the right story. That story is that there are a lot of towns in Vermont with great outdoor recreation. There are a lot of towns in Vermont with great downtowns. There's very few towns that have great downtowns that are seamlessly connected to great outdoor recreation. And that's really the place where Montpelier wants to be. Number two is thinking strategically about how we invest in our trail system. Going back to thinking about the strengths and weaknesses of Montpelier, we, we are not, nor will we ever be, nor probably do people want to be a place like Kingdom Trails and that has sort of gone all in on mountain biking. We are a very family friendly destination. We have great potential access to rivers and water trails. And really want to think about that connection to downtown. So when we talk about how we expand our trail system, those are the ways that we're trying to evaluate how we spend our resources. And then number three, thinking regionally, we're a small city. Like I said, we don't have some, some of the same access to public lands as other places. So we have to think about, okay, how can we connect to places outside of Montpelier? Think about how do we connect to Wrightsville Reservoir? How do we work together with Berry or the other towns in central Vermont? The Cross Vermont Trail goes right through Montpelier, working together with them. We have other big sort of bike trails that go through town. So thinking regionally is number three. This is chart on the, the next three slides will be the same format. We have our recent projects on the left and projects on deck on the right. Strategy number one, telling the right story. We've been really busy on this in the last year. Trust for Public Land and Montpelier Alive have been instrumental in doing things like this, this brochure. We have a new brand up in the right, which is called All Around Adventure for Downtown Montpelier. Basically trying to capitalize on the fact that we have great recreation here, but we're also within thirty minutes of multiple ski destinations and world-class mountain biking and great hiking and swimming. There's a whole new section of their website that's all dedicated to that message. And I have a ninety-second teaser that's done. If you'll humor me, will this go through to people if I click on the video?
Should. It's on the screen.
Maybe I could share my whole screen instead of just the video.
I find myself saying almost every day that I feel so lucky to live here. I love having all the amenities of a small city. There's kind of everything you could possibly want. Kind of the reason why I moved here because there's so much green space. Love being able to walk out my front door and walk in five minutes and be in a park or to be on the pass.
We're really, really fortunate in Montpelier to have accessibility at so many different points to the trail. There's a huge variety of trails. There's something for everybody.
I just love how easy it is to get here to this beautiful place.
There's unlimited terrain. So there's plenty of places that you can go and explore on your bike.
There's a lot of fun adventures in Montpelier. Anybody can do it, whether you're one year old or ninety years old.
All of these trails are publicly available and free to anyone who wants to get out and ski. There's really something for everyone.
Look at this. This is like not even five minutes from downtown. You can imagine like you're completely in the wild.
Every time I come here, I'm like, can't believe this is right outside of town.
I remembered this happening. Sorry. It's really cool.
Yeah, it's really weird to watch a video like that get filmed because it looks great now, but it's a lot of repetition when you're doing it. So that's, that's the ninety-second teaser of all the videos that we made. There are eight that are each a few minutes long about different modes of recreation. Myrna Valeria was our host of all the videos are all but one. And they would meet at a downtown business. They would talk about what they were going to do. Myrna would meet sort of a expert in like, let's say, mountain biking. They would meet and then they would talk about where they were going to go and then they would go do the thing and then come back. And so it was great. Myrna is a really nice person and a wonderful, obviously for publicity has a huge reach of people. It's great that she was willing to do that. So yeah, this is some of the, some of the stuff we've been up to. We have other projects on deck. We have an adventure guide that we'll be doing next year to go along with this brochure. And we have additional videos on tap and further promotion through the website. So a big credit to Montpelier Alive for taking the, taking the horns on that one. See, how do I, here we go. So number two, strategic investments. We had some great success in the past. I expanded the timeline a little bit here to more than just the past year, the past, I would say, three, four years. Well, the Hubbard Park expansion, the North Branch Trails Initiative that added three and a half miles of bike trail. We've been installing trail counters. We're just getting close to finishing the accessible trail in Hubbard Park. And then I think for me, what I think is one of the most valuable and meaningful programs that we've developed is our Montpelier Youth Conservation Corps, which is engaging young people to actually do this work. People, students from MHS and from U32 who are working for us for nine weeks in the summer and, and not just hiring a contractor to do this stuff, but actually getting local kids involved and creating that connection to land that will hopefully, you know, keep them sticking around and, and living here and building skills. And as you can see, we've been able to do it with a lot of external funding. We've been successful on that front of getting this stuff done without much cost to the taxpayers. At least on that side, projects on deck. We have Confluence Park. We have the River Conservancy, Vermont River Conservancy was able to get a $300,000 grant to study the removal of four dams in Montpelier. We talk about the future of recreation in Montpelier. We really want to be looking toward the water as a, as an untapped resource. So the dams, I think anyone who wants to recreate on the river would agree that the dams are preventing that. Unfortunately, you know, there's, we need to put a lot of work into studying what's behind the dams and what would be the consequences of dismantling them partially or fully. So that's where that money will go. We have some money to put in a, a design for a whitewater park as part of Confluence Park in water features. A number of big projects, trail projects that are in design phase right now. And then obviously the big one at the bottom, which is the Country Club Road Site, which is, you know, to be, to be determined what happens there. Balance of recreation and housing. We also have a number of exciting projects, you know, happening in town in different neighborhoods that could open up housing and conservation, recreation opportunities. Number three, thinking regionally, the Cross Vermont Trail has been busy in town, building this beautiful bridge that you see in the picture. They are expanding all the way out to East Montpelier and are getting close to their goal of hooking up to the rail trail in Plainfield that would take you all the way to Groton State Forest. So when you can get from Montpelier to Groton State Forest, that will be a stunning adventure that I think people will want to stay in town and do that and, and make that journey. And we can have a whole effort around promoting that adventure. We also have had a great program the last few years with Onion River Nordic. That's sort of the theme. It's very partner heavy here. A lot of partners on this strategic item. But Onion River Nordic has worked together with our department to expand the Nordic ski trails throughout Montpelier, East Montpelier on the Country Club Road Site, former Morse Farm Trails, and, and that's been a huge asset to the community. This is the last slide, just looking forward. The, you know, some of the budget implications of this strategic plan item, programs on the left. The Montpelier Youth Conservation Corps has been really effective at getting some of this work done. As, as, as I showed on the slide before, we've been really successful at funding it externally. And right below that, we, we're putting forward a proposal to have a more of a maintenance type position to take care of some of our primary assets, you know, if we're building Confluence Park, taking care of the recreation path, some of the downtown areas. Montpelier Alive wants to chip in some money to help water flowers and kind of consolidate some things that a lot of people are maybe doing on the margins of their job, but try to do it a little bit better and showcase some of the key assets that we have. And then looking at projects, trail building is really, you know, where the rubber meets the road as far as bringing people to Montpelier and expanding these opportunities. So we're putting some, last year we put some capital plan money toward that and, and yeah, that's a, that's a potential item on the list. Facing the river, I would just package those together as a Confluence Park Dam Removal on Water Recreation, looking at taking opportunities there. And then the Country Club Road Site. So all these things are going into the sausage grinder of the budget. You know, as far as what, what comes out and the staff recommendation is still TBD. And as you all heard, it's a challenging budget year, but this is, you know, basically laying it out as far as advancing this strategic goal, some of the, some of the ways we would put money in and as you saw before, we've, we've been, we've been successful at leveraging the funding that we put in with external sources too. So that's the end of the presentation. And there any questions?
That's great, Alec. Thank you. Are there any questions for members of the council?
That was awesome. Thank you. I'm a big outdoor person, love to camp in the winter kind of person. And I am wondering if that map is gonna differentiate which trails are good for summer, which ones are good for mud season, which ones are good for winter.
So this is a non-winter map.
Non-winter map. Is there a winter?
There's a winter map in maybe development down the road.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, it would be like the adventure guide is next and in the queue behind it would be.
This is a snowshoe, right?
Yeah.
Only know of a couple of places. So I was like, ooh.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I just want to really appreciate just you've taken on the, the parks and you've just grown from where Jeffrey was. So I really appreciate that you've been very successful. Keep it up.
Yeah, thank you for this really thorough presentation. As one of the people who's not on city council before, I really appreciate being, you know, get a little catch up that you provided. So that's good. So I, I, this is, this may not be for you to answer. I think this is probably a bigger strategic question, but as we're thinking about the, the outdoor recreation economy and we're thinking about it in financial terms, we're thinking about the financial gains that Montpelier can see from outdoor recreation. I'm, I'm interested in more detailed concrete information about how that actually happens. And because I can imagine when I look at the, at the videos, which are amazing, by the way, incredible, beautiful videos. But if we have wealthy people from out of state coming and riding their bikes and going home and maybe they spend their money on hotels and restaurants. Is that, I want, I want to understand better how that is an economic benefit to the entire community. So the people who are not the business owners, the people who don't own the restaurant and don't own the hotel. And the people whose property taxes may be going up because their property values are going up because maybe more people are coming in. And so so I'm maybe being a little, I'm sounding cynical, not trying to be cynical, but I'm trying to, to understand a little bit better how this can actually benefit or how it will benefit the kind of regular, everyday people who are living in Montpelier, you know, not the ones who own the restaurants. And, and we have to be careful about becoming an attraction for people to move here who bring lots of money from out of state and can pay lots of money for their housing, which drives the prices up. And obviously that's already happening. We're seeing that happen and that's not, that's making it harder for some people to live in Montpelier, easier for other people to live in Montpelier. So, so it's not really a question for you. I know because you're not the economist behind this. I just wanted to voice that.
Say a little bit about it because I think it's a really good point. And glad you brought it up. I think that when we look about, talk about our next steps, especially that item number one, you know, telling the right story. I think we need more community input around that story. We need a lot more, more public process around it. I think we have developed this story with, you know, our staff and Montpelier Alive and input from nonprofits and taking examples of other communities, but I think that the, the residents of Montpelier really should weigh in there. And we were hoping to be part of a federal program called Recreation Economy for Rural Communities that does exactly that. They basically give you money to engage in a planning process with the community to talk about what outdoor recreation looks like. What kind of economic development people want to see? They have paused the program, so we're, you know, keeping, keeping an eye on it. But I think the point you make speaks exactly to that, which is that, yeah, more public input and keep pulling the thread on the sweater to talk about, you know, what, what is this for and why? Yeah.
Thank you.
It's a great question and some of it you answered before. And one thing you didn't talk about, at least I missed it, were the fat bikes. And that all the new trails for the fat bikes, there was a lot of data about people coming into a community and doing the trails and that they tend to stay two or three days, unlike the leaf peepers that come in on buses and just leave. And so I thought some of that data came from you, but maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's great data from other communities about how people spend their money when they come to a town to do outdoor recreation. And I think probably a lot of it, I, I presented that, some of that in the longer, in the longer, me, in the longer presentation last year. And some of it would probably hold true for Montpelier, but I think ultimately unless we do our own economic impact study, we won't know. And some of it would probably hold true for Montpelier, but I think ultimately unless we do our own economic impact study, we won't know what, what the impact is on town until we do.
The group that the Regional Planning Commission was sponsoring and, and meeting, I know I attended a couple of the remote meetings with the statewide recreational trails and how to promote them. Is that still going on? Is it an ongoing?
Yeah, yeah. So there's two, there's, there's two programs. There's a statewide program called BOREC, which stands for Vermont Outdoor Recreation Economic Collaborative. BOREC is a lot easier to say than the full name. And they're focusing on helping communities capitalize on economic development through outdoor recreation. And one of, one of our new programs that we got with BOREC funding was a, a regional quarterly regional meetings in central Vermont. So outdoor recreation stakeholders, not just people like me, but people like, you know, Main Street businesses and people who have more of a traditional economic development role, getting together and talking about what's our strategy for central Vermont, you know, how are we working together? Yeah. Anybody else?
Okay. And I don't see any hands raised online. So Alec, thanks a lot. I think this is great. This, the vision is really, you can see how this can build into the years into the future.
Yeah. Thanks for having me.
I think he's going very far.
No. Different presentation.
Our next item on the agenda, item seven, Emerald Ash Borer update. John, is that you? All right. I was, I was predicting the other John tonight, but.
He couldn't make it. He would.
Ready when you are. Is there a presentation for this? Oh, you do.
By capacity, and this presentation is as chairman of the tree board. We work very closely with parks and trees.
Uh, yep, I'm still Alec Ellsworth. For those of you who have no idea, which I'm sure is everybody, what the Parks and Trees Department is, we are about 65, 35 parks and trees. So the park side, I think is pretty obvious. The tree side is the simplest way to explain it is if you go about 25 feet in either direction from the center line of most roads in town, all the trees within that corridor are maintained by the city. So our, our small staff does the maintenance pruning, removals, planting within that area. And the tree board is a instrumental community board that, that basically assists with that work. So yeah, getting back to the, to the why we are here. We adopted an Emerald Ash Borer Management Plan in 2018. And this is an update on where we're at with that plan and what the next few years hold and where the needs are. So we'll talk a little bit about, you know, the past few years of, of EAB and, and the status and what we've been doing as part of the plan and then what we plan to do moving forward. So Emerald Ash Borer, small insect that infects all ash trees. It was first found in Vermont in Orange in 2018. It was estimated at that time by people who are experts in the field that it had been there for six to nine years. It was found shortly thereafter at National Life in Montpelier. And because it wasn't found in a forest setting, it was just found in a tree in the parking lot. It was not clear at that time what, what state, you know, if, if it'd been, if it'd been the only one, or if it'd been three years or five years, nine years. So at this point, because we have a few years, you know, it's been five years since 2018 and we've been monitoring it closely. We're guessing that we're in year six to seven of the infestation. And that's great news. You know, it doesn't seem like it. If we had been in year six to seven in 2018, I think we'd be in a much worse state right now. And that, I guess the teaser for, for this whole presentation is like, we, we had a plan, we've been following the plan, and I think we're in pretty good shape with that plan. So we, we should celebrate that we did that. The council, the staff. I, I feel like too often we sort of gloss over when we actually do that type of thing. So appreciations all around for that. But yeah, at this point, we're, we're likely in year six to seven of that infestation. And if you look at the graph on the right, it's a little blurry. Apologize for that. But the line shows the percentage of ash trees that are dead. And the, the numbers on the bottom are the years from the beginning of the infestation. So we're at, about the red arrow there. So you can see things are start, starting to get quite bad or will be quite bad here in the next couple of years. We might not be seeing widespread ash death in the next summer or two, but yeah, by, by 25, 26, 27. People will look around at the ash trees all over town and they will all be, all be dying or dead.
This is not new news either. We, we were first appeared here in 2016 with a preparedness plan. And John Akalasik did a great job of, of doing that. And that plan was utilized throughout the state by other communities. But it showed exactly this curve where once you hit, you know, about year eight, it takes off like a rocket ship. And there these trees will die, period. They will die unless they're treated, which Alec will talk about in a moment.
So this is the status of the ash trees in Montpelier. We have 743. I'm sure it's not perfect, but it's probably a pretty close number. Thanks to the good work of the tree board and staff who do a survey of the ash trees every year. Either in the right of way or close to it, you know, could, could impact the public. They're widely distributed. You see they're the gray dots all, all on the map there. They're roughly 8% of the street trees that we have. So it's a good, really significant chunk of the urban forest. Most significantly, if you look downtown, every single large tree downtown is a green ash tree. Literally every single one. There's not a tree over 20 feet that is a different type of tree. So.
And those green ash were all planted about 50 years ago. So they've, they've been there a long time and we hope to keep them long enough so that we can replace them.
Yeah. So they're, they're a really important part of our downtown streetscape, underappreciated but important. John has taken some amazing photos with the heat gun that show like what the, what the temperature of the sidewalk is on a 90 degree day and what the temperature is in a bench under an ash tree on the corner of East State Street and Main Street. It's pretty amazing. So this is what we have done. Oh, sorry. Going back to this, the red dots are, we had a major windfall in our plan, which it wasn't in the plan, but it was wonderful that it happened, which is Green Mountain Power, Montpelier was at the top of their list of places that they were removing ash trees. So they came in a few years ago and removed 200 ash trees about all over town. Those are the red dots.
Anything that would impact the lines. They did, we paid for it, you know, penny by penny, but it was a huge boon to us.
Yeah, I really, I, I shudder to think where we would be without that work because they, they did take a lot of high profile trees. Yeah. So all of these items track back to the Emerald Ash Borer Management Plan. We're treating prominent street tea, street trees that keeps them alive as long as we treat them every two to three years with a trunk injection. We're removing 10% of the ash in the right of way every year. We've removed 77 up to this point and plan to continue that work or accelerate it. We are planting new trees downtown to replace the large green ash. And we're using a new, while it's not new, but a new to Montpelier innovative technique to try to have the trees grow bigger and last longer, mostly to do with replacing a bigger root area underneath the sidewalk that mostly goes unseen to everyone but the tree. So the tree has a much bigger area to grow, getting it more water. We have invested in staff capacity through our Parks and Trees Program, specifically in the City Arborist position that really spearheads a lot of this work. And we have annual monitoring program. We have a number of slow the spread techniques, including a marshaling area for firewood, for ash firewood and a wave something we call trap trees where we, we treat, we actually girdle trees that are infested and then treat them with the insecticide so that bugs are attracted to them and then get killed by the insecticide. And then we have created, or we create added value products. There's a, obviously a sort of a windfall of ash, which is a very valuable wood for a variety of things. It's great firewood. It's a beautiful wood for hardwood boards. So we got a grant to purchase a mill with some matching funds from the city that we'll be, we'll be using to mill some of the urban ash and sell. And then, yeah, the Green Mountain Power Program as well. These are the people that are doing the work. Adam McCullough, some of you may know him, is our City Arborist. There's me, John and John Akalasik, who gets a lot of credit for all this. Yeah, sing his praises. He actually won an award on a state level for his work in Montpelier on ash, on EAB. He won an award from the Vermont Urban and Community Forestry Program for, I don't know what the name of it was, but it was like awesome, community member. And he deserved it. He is amazing. Joanne Garten, who lives in town and works for the Vermont Urban and Community Forestry Program, has been instrumental in advising us and then our Parks and Trees Staff who do the work of actually removing these trees and treating them and many, many tree board volunteers. Anyone you want to add? There's more people, but that's a, yeah. So this is where things stand. We, if you look at the plan, we've basically accomplished everything except for two things. One is upgrading our bucket truck to one that's more suited for urban forestry. And the other one is discuss, discussing, and that would be a council discussion about a revolving loan fund to help private resident, residents with trees on private land. So, you know, let's say somebody has a tree on private land that could fall into the public right of way. But they don't have the resources to deal with that, you know, what, what do we do there? So that's a, that's a conversation for further down the road after we've dealt with our own problem of the trees in the right of way. And we really want to be dealing with those as soon as we possibly can. And one of the things that's important to know is that the, the, the longer you wait during the infestation, the more dangerous these trees are to deal with. They become very brittle and unpredictable. There's been a lot of.
John, a chance to think about this since we had a break, but I was curious as to how long we can treat the trees and whether we have enough in the budget to maintain those trees that we've decided to treat and what they need for us to keep up with the trees as they talked about the increased volume.
Yeah, we can treat the trees in perpetuity, in theory, every three years. We don't really know what's going to happen, but the what it's going to do besides buy us time to plant more trees is a chance to perhaps come up with some resistant trees to have insects that are predators to the Emerald Asphor, Roden, Little Wasps. Those are already being released in some areas. We don't know whether they're sustainable or not. But if we can keep them going, the main benefit is that we can we can grow the other trees around them on the street. And we've seen we've seen the trees that we planted, they're really taking off. So that's, that's good.
Yeah. And just to answer your question about resources, there was a there was an expense to tooling up to getting the right equipment to treat those trees and the right training. But at this point, you know, like a very modest increase to our operating budget would cover the the new program of treating these trees. So it's basically a matter of buying the product. We have most of the expensive items now and the people to do it. So, yeah, I feel I feel good about maintaining a treatment program at a very modest cost.
Thank you.
Yeah, Connor.
Thanks a lot, guys. It feels good to like, you came in here years ago, like just with this proactive approach and no, it's not great, but it's under control anyways. What are what are other communities doing? Are they in a similar spot? Are they taking the same steps? Is it is it going to be a wasteland? Like if you go out of town here?
There's there's a pretty wide range of response throughout Vermont. But I think it's consistent in the communities like Montpelier, like if you look at Rutland or Brattleboro, South Burlington, they're taking a similar approach of, you know, a little bit of this, a little bit of that, using the resources they have, being creative, not trying to go too crazy, like, you know, not cut all the ash trees down at one time or treat all of them. I think people add credit to the State Urban and Community Forestry Program, you know, they've advised all the cities and towns on what to do. And I think they have been very skilled at doing that. So people are taking this very balanced approach. I think Montpelier, we were ahead of the curve in the sense that we had John and John to develop this plan and come to you, people who had the foresight to do it. So I think we're in better shape than some communities. And then there's all the rural communities that are kind of just letting their trees die and fall where they may, which is not great, but they're not left with a lot of options. If you're East Montpelier and you have 20,000 ash trees along your road and a couple, you know, a couple people who do all all the roadwork, not to say nothing of the tree work, it's an insurmountable problem.
We had a lot of good examples from the Midwest where all this started in Michigan in 2002. And I grew up in Michigan and get back there once or twice a year. So I got to see this happen. And you'd see communities where they did nothing because they didn't know what what it was all about. And literally five to 10 years later, every single ash tree was dead. And they were falling on houses in the street, in the woods. There was jack straw pile. Other than at some point, people thought, well, let's cut them all down preemptively. And it turned out that was a mistake because the the Emerald Ash Bor would then jump further to the next available ash tree. You'd cut down all of the easy ones. They only travel about two to three miles a year on their own. It was, of course, we found out, moving firewood that was the big transporter that caused them in 20 years to reach all the way to here to Vermont and cross the Mississippi River. And so we learned a lot from other communities early on. And John, John A just managed to grab all that and put it in a doable format.
Thanks so much, guys.
I just want to remember, remind the council and the community, when you came to us, it was not an unanimous vote, put money aside, because it wasn't visible. It was it was gambling on a future that we were committed in a preventative mode. And so I just really appreciate that happened, but it also it's a challenge for the council that we do have to think ahead. And whether it's saving land or it's proactive on a disease that's coming in on our trees. So I I remember that fight. This first $10,000 was hard.
Yeah, Lauren.
Yeah, having a similar thought as Donna. I remember having the conversation during the pandemic and the budget was so hard. And we're like, oh, do we keep putting the money in? And I think just like the the foresight and planning and the consistent modest investment to keep us where we are and like really appreciate we're on top of it. And I'm sure we'll have similar discussions with the broader budget and just, you know, having to look ahead and make strategic investments now that might still be hard, but are going to save us money in the long run and save huge problems from coming down the road. So thank you for the foresight and really keeping us on top of this.
I want to observe, like, like everyone else, it's great that we did this and got ahead of it. And I think that this is really a testament testimony to the quality and the qualifications of the volunteers around the city who have volunteered to be on the tree board and many of the other volunteer boards and commissions that we have and not every city has that resource that they can do. I think this is just great. I have, before the leaves started falling, I went around and looked at at least one or two of the trees, new trees on Main Street, and they looked like they're really quite healthy and thriving. Is that what you found?
Yeah, I mean, it's a little early to tell, in my opinion, you know, like what the saying is like the first year they sleep, the second year they creep, and the third year they leap. So we're in the first year. But they're alive. I'll say that much, you know. And yeah, if they're leaping in three years, then I'll be really happy. But I'm cautiously optimistic.
Well, and that's the four that we planted last year in this this new way. Prior to that, we we worked really closely with DPW to, you may have remembered, we tore up a bunch of sidewalks and threw all this gravelly looking stuff in the holes and then poured new sidewalks. And everybody's saying, what'd you do that for? Well, they gave a bigger root zone to, we left the existing trees there. And those trees have taken off. We were losing trees after about five or six years. These trees now are continuing to grow in a way that I I'm just thrilled about.
Okay, anybody else, anyone on online have any questions you'd like to raise? Okay, thanks for coming in. All right, we are up to item eight, the tax instrument financing and tax stabilization.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Council President. And Stephanie Clark from Whiten Burke, our TIF consultant, will be joining us, is joining us remotely. While while she's setting up, I did want to just report out that we did, we have looked at the closed captioning. And it does appear that it's possible, we believe it would require a full shutdown and restart of the whole meeting to do it. So we're suggesting we will do it for start it for next meeting after we can test it and make sure it's working. But we can try it tonight if you would like us to. We can't guarantee it'll work. We think it will.
I would prefer to keep going forward tonight and
I just want to let you know that we are on it. With that, with that, I will say, just by way of introduction, we had listed in our strategic plan to look at our TIF and tax stabilization program. And I've been wanting to get to this. With the TIF program, we're running up onto some deadlines with the state. So it was very timely that we be taking a review at kind of what we wanted to do with it, because we have to make some decisions. And so I think I'm going to leave it to Stephanie to kind of lay out where we're at with the rules and regulations of TIF and the decision points we're at and what we're recommending and why. And then, once we finish the TIF conversation, and there's really, we don't really have anything specific on tax stabilization, but I can explain why that's how they relate. So with that, I'll turn it over to Stephanie. I think most of you have seen her also in her roles with the CCR project, Country Club Road Project.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Bill. Hello, councilors. And good to see you again in this capacity. Again, I'm Stephanie Clark with Whiten Burke Real Estate Advisors, and we helped put together the original TIF district in 2018. And so you've seen the memo, but I'm going to do a quick recap just for anyone who is listening that didn't get or didn't see the memo. But the original district was established in 2018. It identified 11 private development projects that could be stimulated by the investment of the city into seven public infrastructure projects. That was a grand plan, which is what that exercise is and sets out as a goal. And then there was a pandemic. So things changed, a lot of things changed. Some of the projects were abandoned, some of the projects changed course, some of the projects ended up getting done, but on a different path. And we are finding ourselves in a totally new era, even just five years later, not even. And part of that is the construction cost environment, part of that are the market conditions, part of that is population change and population demand. And the city has been exploring, as you well know, different economic development options and different economic development opportunities, not not least of which is the Country Club Road site. And so the question came back to to us as the fees, looking at feasibility is, is the district as you have it set up today, serving the purposes that the current city of Montpelier has for its economic development goals? And the answer was no. And the point of the tool is to set it up and use it prudently. If you don't use it, there's no penalty, there's no damage done. In fact, it's a really good sign when a district can acknowledge and own that it's not the right tool to be using for these projects. It's not irresponsibly spending or investing poorly. It's making the choice not to use the tool. And in this case, dissolving the district as it stands today. So there's no penalty to dissolve it. There has been no debt incurred. There's been no infrastructure projects done to date. So the district will, we spoke with VFC with the Vermont Economic Progress Council, which is the state entity that oversees the TIF district. They understood our position. They've approved of this process, which would be that we dissolve the district, you dissolve the district with authorizing a letter to the state. And then you no longer have a TIF district, but it doesn't preclude you from applying in the future, should there be a need for a district in another iteration. You know, it could be a different location, it could be a different organization of it, and it will undoubtedly have different priorities and different projects in its sites. So you can apply again in the future. There is a limit to two districts per county. And so this would, this would not count against that limit, the one you had already, it would go away. So there would still be opportunities for two. Berry has a TIF district, but that came before the rule. So two districts left could happen in Washington, in Washington County. And if the city wanted to reapply, it would be one of those two, if that makes sense, just that the district you have goes away, it doesn't take up a slot unnecessarily. Yeah, as Bill mentioned, we had the, one of the reasons this is coming up right now is that there is a, there was a rule and part of the existing TIF district is that you had to incur debt before five years, before the end of five, within your first first five years. And that date is March 2023. And you're not going to incur debt on any project before March 2023. And again, it doesn't isn't consistent with the goals. So this is a good time to dissolve the district and reassess the economic development options. So my recommendation is if you take a vote tonight to sign the letter, I will then submit that to VFC with the minutes of the meeting, and that will officially dissolve this district in its current form.
If I may just add a couple of things to that. So in addition to the deadline, there's also a total lifespan of the So in addition to the, the deadline, there's also a total lifespan of the, the TIF district of the 20 years. So even if we were to incur debt in March, we'd only have sort of 15 years to, to do that. So if we were to, basically, if we start up a new district, we start at the beginning and we have the full 20 years to, to work with and the debt period. And as Stephanie said, you know, we could conceivably reconfigure the district. So for example, it does not include the Country Club Road site currently and goes all the way down, you know, through downtown, it's this big long district. So we might want to think about that. The other thing I would urge, particularly the two members of the council who are going to be working down the road next year, is there's actually a proposal for what's called project-based TIF, which rather than having large TIF districts, you actually have, you set up a TIF specifically for a project. And ideally, those would not be limited to the number per town. So it would be a self-sustaining type, type project. And we're really, actually, we in the city are really in favor of those. And there's been some pushback from the legislature. I know the, the community development folks at the state are also going to try to push it again this year. So we're counting on at least two votes in favor of this. Donna.
I like the attitude, Connor. I, I mean, I don't think there's any question about this. So I'm going to make a motion that we formally dissolve the city's TIF district with the option of reapply, reapply in the future. And then we authorize the mayor and the city manager to send a letter to the Vermont Economic Program Council, formally dissolving.
I'll second.
All right. I, I do want to have some discussion because I have a few questions, but I, I think you're right, it's a pretty easy call to make. Stephanie, I have a couple of questions. It's, it's hard to see what the downside might be for, for taking this action, but I can imagine that one potential risk is that we might miss the queue because there could be two other municipalities within the county who are, who want to jump in front of us and get the TIF districts approved. And, you know, I don't want to get you to do anything that would, that you would feel is unethical, but, but you could conceivably be, be developing a, a plan for another town, just the way you worked on it for us. Is there any way of knowing if other municipalities in the county are?
You're very wise, counselor. Yeah, that's, that is a, that is a risk. So that is a risk, you're right, to put that forward is a risk as those slots could get eaten up before, before you come back. That being said, I know of no other district, no other community in Washington County that is seeking a TIF district, at least not through my firm. No, we do, the majority of the TIF work in the state of Vermont. And, you know, I think that would be, VEPSE is very open about districts that are pursuing TIF. So it's a matter of staying in close contact too, I think is a good idea, to just stay in touch and talk about economic development initiatives with them frequently anyway. And therefore, you know, staying on top of the idea that, you know, if there's other communities that are looking to do TIF. And maybe in that case too, it's just understanding what other tools, like Bill had said, a pro, you know, project-based TIF might be the better fit anyway. So just something to keep in mind.
Thanks, I remember when you came to us a few years ago and made the presentation about doing the TIF district, you were very clear that we shouldn't just go and figure, well, what the hell, we'll do this and then hopefully something will happen. We'll have, it, it's only makes sense to do it if we have projects that, that we already think might, might benefit the city.
Absolutely. And, and to that end, you know, I'll just give you an example real quick, which is that Montpelier and Bennington were both approved at the same, in the same timeframe. Bennington also did not incur debt within its first five-year window. And they recently went back to get approval, to get an extension for another five years to be able to do the incurring of debt for the next five years. And that was a strategic choice because they had, they have projects that are at the ready right now that are trying to use the tool. And they, they were so close and they said, we just need to be able to keep our district. And it's exactly still the projects that we had on that list are still moving forward. So for them, it made sense. And I think this is a wonderful example of the tool being able to be customized to each, each municipality, using it prudently for your community.
One other, I, I see that there's a hand, I'll just add to, to the question of, of risk, I guess. In a, in addition to the two per county, there's a statewide limit. And I think there's four or five, I think if we, if we were to give this up, I think it becomes five open TIF slots statewide. So it's also possible that five other communities elsewhere in the state, not in Washington County, could take those. But again, we have talked to VEPSE and they're not aware of any that are inactive discussion anywhere. So, you know, even if one were to come in, there would still be four allowed. But just so you're aware.
Thanks. Were you raising your hand, Lauren?
I just want to say, I mean, part of the reason, I guess, I felt so firm about going ahead and dissolving it was we only have three months until it'll be officially dissolved anyways. So I just try to do it now and be clean about it. Because we want to have projects in the pipeline. And right now, none of them are in the district that we had proposed. So I think we need to do a major restructuring of any future one.
Linda Berger.
Thank you, I just had a question. I, I thought I understood Stephanie to say that this didn't match the current economic development goals of the city. So does that just mean the goals that were in the specific TIF district?
Yes, our TIF district plan at the time, you know, was prioritizing the downtown parking garage, for example, and, and those priorities, which just aren't consistent at the time now.
Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thanks, Stephanie.
You're welcome. Take good care.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Hey, we're up to item nine, discussion or presentation of our history of public record requests. Assume that's to you, Bill.
Yeah, I will start to me, this was requested under our charter, which allows any resident or person actually to request an item be placed on the agenda. And Mr. Whitaker did so, so I will turn that over to the agenda requester.
Okay, you're up.
Can you hear me?
Not quite, get closer to the mic, I think.
Is, uh, is this one not turned on?
It's better.
So there's four categories or issues that need to be discussed here. There's timeliness of records, there's fees, there's access to inspection and copies. And then there's transitional systems. Timeliness, I saw a list here at the table for the first time tonight. Print so small it can barely be read, but it's a list of a bunch, a couple of years' worth of public records requests, not just from me, but from many people in the community. And it doesn't include some of the longest outstanding requests that have still not been completed. The permit conditions on city center, numerous, a number, a small number of people that I've spoken to recall when city center was permitted that those restrooms would remain available to the public. This, this is on, same with the parking garage would be publicly accessible at city center. Apparently, those permit conditions have disappeared from the file. Misplaced, intentionally misfiled, whatever. But numerous requests appealed to the head of the agency, et cetera. The city manager has yet to certify that the records don't exist, which tells me that there's, somebody's doing a favor to a developer or suggests that somebody's doing a favor by disappearing a permit condition that has people sitting on the streets, okay? It's unhealthy, it's, it's unethical, there's a lot of things wrong with it. But the failure to certify the nonexistence of the records should be a telltale sign. The the spreadsheets, the motorola of spreadsheets. I asked recently for records that were used in the application for public safety grants. I asked for the spreadsheets that became the basis for the quoted prices that went into the grant application. I was given one spreadsheet, but when you hover over many of the numbers on one of the four tabs, it references another spreadsheet. And management basically said, that's all we got, tough. It's like, yeah, but they have the numbers either on another spreadsheet in the same folder or through a web access to a vendor spreadsheet. They had the numbers in order to put them into the proposal, but they did not comply with the records request for the spreadsheets that are the basis for that application. And they didn't really give a shit, a, a damn about following through and complying with the law on that. The body cams proposal, I was told by one of the regional lead regional salespeople from Axon, which is the market leader, which Berlin has, a purpose-built body cam, that they had provided a proposal to Montpelier. This is not the only records that are disappearing, you know? So the body cam proposal, they claim isn't here. The reason it might not be here, somebody threw it away because it also included a proposal for tasers and this town has, council has voted not to have tasers. But the fact that that record and other records are disappearing from the public archive, those are not your records to throw away, you know? You are obligated to maintain and preserve those records. And the only way that records are allowed to be destroyed is through a approved public records retention schedule by the state archivist. That hasn't happened. So correspondence with the 911 board related to Montpelier ceasing to be a public safety answering point, when we used to answer 911 calls here directly, which is a revenue implication in, in the crisis that we're in right now, subject of meetings today, et cetera. So how the correspondence related to Montpelier ceasing to be a PSAP disappears is troubling, you know? What, whose job is it to make sure that these records are found, preserved, located and produced upon request? I would say it's the city manager's job, it is the city council's job to find out what's, get to the bottom of this. Why are we losing public records? That's not allowed, it's illegal. A request for records related to the veracity complaints, related to the veracity or professionalism of, of the police chief. That was characterized by, I, basically it's an attempt to cover it up, you know? They don't want a particular record or several records exposing police chief's behavior to be made public, so they basically say, oh, there's too many. I'm like, oh, really? That's a whole nother problem. If there's so many records related to the veracity or the professionalism of the police chief, you know, maybe that's news. But to have the city manager, you know, tell the reporter, Linda Berger, that a massive public records request, that shouldn't be a massive public records request. That should just be, what do you got on Chief Pete and whether he's been unprofessional or not, you know? So that would, these have not been honored. The memo, Frazier, Frazier cannot be the head of the agency addressing his own appeal. So I asked for the memo that he provided to the council as support for him being allowed to modify his own contract without a lawyer representing the city, without a lawyer representing him. That is grossly unethical from everyone I've talked to. And, and Jack, you should know that of, of all things. And then to act as an appeal to the head of the agency for that memo and he doesn't see a conflict and have to hand that off to somebody else is absurd. So that memo I don't believe is exempt after the contract is signed, you know? So I mean, this stuff is piling up and the fact that I'm bringing it to your attention, y'all need to probably, it's more complex than you're going to solve tonight, but you need to take it seriously. You might need to appoint, I might suggest soliciting some interested, honest public members to put, work on a committee to catalog and address these issues. You know, Kelman, Kim Chaney, somebody who's basically not afraid of y'all, you know, or not beholden to you, you know? Don't stack it like you did the, you know, homelessness task force with people who will maintain the status quo. Cruiser video, there was an incident where an officer gave false information related to a state law related to, you know, laying in a car. And the incident report says their video is there, but then the video is missing. So we have people in positions of power, in the law enforcement community with access and motive to destroy public records that would implicate them and potentially get a Brady letter. And we're allowing this to happen? I asked for there should have been cruiser video of incident related to my putting the toilet signs in because the chief and another officer arrived just as I went to the police station to complain. There's no video of that either. I asked for the video of another person that I witnessed being harassed down in the Haney Lot. And speaking of veracity, I, I was here the night that the vendor, the police chief couldn't adequately describe the body camera solution he wanted. So he very unusually brought a vendor in here to sit here and try to sell you his solution of the smartphone body cameras. And they then issued an RFP and as that RFP was being mentioned, I spoke and the council was reassured by the city manager, oh, Bill, this is just in the RFP, there will be future opportunity to discuss the shortcomings of this solution after the RFP responses come in. And, and sure enough, true to form, it goes on the consent agenda to buy that solution. No discussion. And none, none of y'all had the guts to remove it from the consent agenda and discuss it. And those body cam and their shortcomings, those smartphone and their shortcomings are right in the center of this issue of me being assaulted by your police chief here in the hallway after being, you know, illegally arrested by your colleague. So access and, access to an inspection of records, especially the videos. Everyone seems to be being weasely about who owns the videos that we, that come from these cameras, that, that it's true, an org staff person sometimes, most of the time operates the camera. But those videos are relied upon by our city clerk to complete the minutes. They are a public record, they're created in the course of agency business and those belong to the city and they should remain in the city's custody and control. And they're not. And I asked for the videos of all those Zoom meetings that we've held since the pandemic. And what did I get, a $3,800 estimate from Cameron? Some outrageous estimate of records that should be on a hard drive here that I could inspect them with or without closed captioning and take a copy with me on a thumb drive. This is not rocket science, this is sloppy management. And, and I'm calling it to your attention because you need to do something about it before it has to go to court. So I asked for records most recently about a person, a NECKI employee, who was reported to be, he was a resident assistant in the dorms and he was reported to be discovered in people's rooms when they woke up. And it raised alarms. And subsequent to that time, we learned that person was convicted and jailed for molesting a young, a daughter of, of, well, engaging in, I'm not, I won't, I, I don't have enough of the facts. But I've asked for the facts of what our police department knew and what interactions they had. And I'm told that $480. So what you've done by adopting that policy, remember I told you, you shouldn't adopt this thing tonight on no public notice, you should handle it like an ordinance, hold public hearings, inform the public that their rights to get public records are going to be impinged by this. And y'all just slammed it on through, just to, you know, try to call it the, you know, Whitaker suppression policy. So apparently, from what I'm learning from Nordensen, is that we changed from CrimeTrack software management system about 2013 to Valcor. About 2013 to Valcor. Valcor is the current records management system. And. He quoted $480. To do a search of one person's name in crime track. They still maintain the other system. Because they need it. There's no, they didn't migrate the records. So. They're basically either, again, trying to cover up the fact that they failed to pursue this guy. Oh, this guy's. Since went to prison and. From something I read on the web, I haven't verified. Committed suicide after he was being investigated for the disappearance of the mother of the child that he molested. So this guy may have been a murderer. May have been a molester. And he's walking into people's rooms while they sleep here in Montpelier and it's getting reported, but not. Hit in the press. There's a problem with that. And it's. I've reported, I told you at at another meeting. I reported. Theft of property that was mine given to me by M and M by Officer Long. And then I went to the Internal Affairs Officer. And then I later asked him what was going on. He said, well, I wasn't going to rock the boat. I'm about to retire. So this is the kind of corruption that I raised with your police review committee. And they told because of the narrow mission that you gave them for this police review committee, we're not going to look backwards. We're only going to dream about what would be nice in the future. But until you get accountability, until you acknowledge the mistakes that have been made. And the injustices, you don't move on. You've got a corrupt department. The corrupt department harassing this guy sleeping in his car down in the Haney lot. And you're throwing a paywall obstacle to getting the records of what was said. He at least knew his rights well enough to not. You know, be pushed around and not volunteer information that they would distort news against him. So the only way that the city can rely on ORCA for maintain maintenance. And distribution and honoring public records requests. For the videos of these meetings is if the city were under contract with ORCA. Paying for the service and having. ORCA agree. To maintain the storage, maintain a safety storage possibly in the cloud. And produce the records at the cost of duplication. Upon request. And in accordance with public records law, we don't have that. And I asked for those contracts. We don't have that contract. So we cannot be relying on. The fact that. And CBPSA does the same thing. You know, Donna refuses to record CBPSA meetings because she says ORCA is doing it for us and I don't want to, she even says on the record. I don't want to have those records because then I'm responsible for maintaining them and distributing them.
Well, that's. We're not CBPSA.
But we are a member of CBPSA. So you have an obligation through your. Assigned representatives to that council. To hold that council accountable. With all due respect. So I asked for. Body cam footage, uh. And. This relates to the same with the CAD system. Before a cat that we should have switched CAD systems and analysis should have been done of what impact is this going to have on public records access? Is this going to create? A financial burden for requesters if we move into a new system without migrating the records? That should have been asked with the CAD system. It should have been asked with the body cams. I asked for body cam footage. And they. Say we don't, we're. They're telling me they're not obliged to give me a copy. And I'm saying, you're damn right. You're obliged to give me a copy. That's what the state law says. The requestor can request to inspect or receive a copy. A copy is not a link. When I tried to download this thing from whatever site. Some third party site out there, which. Is a risk to even click on links at third party sites. It crashed. The tablet I was using. And Frazier says, oh, it works on my tablet. That's all. We don't, we don't have the records here. So we're not obliged to produce them. Oh, because we've stored the records. At the vendor site, we're claiming we're not, those aren't public records anymore. We're not bound by the requirement to produce a copy of a record? That's fricking twisted logic. So. This is the kind of flying in the face of law that happens at the discretion of the manager. And. I didn't suggest contract out for an attorney. Because an attorney, a contracted attorney has an incentive to lead you into litigation, which then he gets. Quite profit from. So I said the city should have an attorney that reviews many of Bill Frazier's actions and. Stops him before he crosses over the line, which he does all too frequently. So a cat, a city of this size, a capital city should have a city attorney. So. I don't know what you want to do with all that.
Okay, I guess I just got to wrap up. Yeah, it seems like you're getting close to the end and I'd like to.
I'm gonna take half the time that the tree board take took.
So we, so we can have some opportunity for.
So the person is this person's cluster is Aga. And and you should be concerned with that. I mean, there could be other victims in our community. Who. Have learned and I've talked to people on the street, both housed and unhoused. And they refuse to report. They are disinclined to report when somebody steals their phone or assaults them because they don't trust our police department. And and I can see why. If our police department steals from me. Assaults me. You know, disappears records and is. Learned from this council and prior that they do that with impunity? You know, what kind of example are you setting? That this is a town that we want to, that we live in, or that we don't need a. Police oversight body with subpoena authority to investigate that. Because that body. That body would have the guts to do what y'all don't do, which is your obligation. So. That's most of my notes that came to mind. There are other. Examples, but that's enough for you to get started on and realize the magnitude of this issue.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from any members of the council? Okay, I I will just make an observation. Um, or. I I take it that. Although I I know you've litigated some. Issues about public records or open meetings. In in court before I take it that you've not. Sue the city for any of the violations that you claim. Uh, we've responsible for uh. On these cases.
Correct.
Okay. And.
Y'all will do your job.
And my my observation. Is that. There's a tremendous amount. Of what I would. Characterize as. Begging the question by you here. And and by that, I mean that. You've referred on a number of occasions in your testimony to um. Records that. Were not given to you. That. You believe because of some rumor that you've heard from somebody that those records exist. But you do not actually have any. Evidence that those records ever existed. For instance, the, for instance, the permit conditions at the. The city center building that. That you apparently have heard rumors, a couple, you said that a couple of people have told you that those. Conditions existed. I know that you've been offered the opportunity to go through. Whatever records exist in the. In storage to see if you can find what the.
If you can define records, it's the city's obligation to produce them. That's a very important point.
Only if they exist, only if they.
Yes, but if they exist, it is the city's obligation to. Be able to locate them in a time efficient manner of a sloppy filing system is not supported by case law to be grounds for charging fees.
Well, you're assuming that they exist.
They, why wouldn't the city manager certify they don't exist because he knew they he destroyed them?
Now, is there. And and you're undoubtedly aware that the city center building was. Was not done during the tenure of the current city manager.
Yes.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions to the witness or any? Action they want to propose the city take in response to what we've been presented tonight? Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you.
Classic. Next. Hope the voters hold y'all accountable.
Next item on the agenda is. The request from councillor Bate about the CBPSA.
Uh, thank you. Central Vermont Public Safety Authority is holding its public hearing on a proposed three year budget tomorrow night. On November 10. And. The initial draft can change radically. We, they're going to be making a decision right prior to the public hearing. They're having a regular board meeting to discuss the budget. When we left October meeting, they were talking about. Putting enough money in the budget to hire an executive director. And even if we did it as a contract and not an employee, as an employee, it was costing us part time over $100,000. And we that also included a very small, single room we rented with a phone. So but with a subcontractor instead of employee, we got. Cost down to around $70,000. But then they also talked about a CAD, which also Stevens mentioned a couple of times and a CAD.
Stand for?
A CAD is a computer aided dispatch system. And it means you not only in one communication channel, you have your. Staff, you have pictures of where your vehicles are. It's very holistic, comprehensive for the dispatcher. To have a handle on everybody through one channel. As well as everybody else knows where things are going on. Instead of right now, people are on. Have to come in at different times. Information is not readily available. And. It's very expensive. Televate, when they did our need assessment. Report that came out in August in 2021 estimated the cost for Barry and Montpelier to have a CAD system was around $750,000. Now, Joe's Ellsworth at Barry said there's some other ways of getting a CAD system that's less costly, but it's a major capital. Venture. And so for this year, the proposal is to put. A consultant fee in to work on the CAD system, to work on what would work and and how do like an RFP for equipment, just. We call brush out that approach. And so with that, we would be putting into the. Ballot for March. Uh, somewhere between a hundred thousand, $150,000 request. Now.
Just for Montpelier and then.
No, for both cities, for both cities. So. It was a hundred. Hundred thousand dollars and it would be $53,000 on from Barry and $47,000 from Montpelier. And. So the board has requested that. And so the draft budget includes that option. And I think during the discussion, whether or not they stay on wanting to have an executive director. Uh, I think with the price of the CAD, it's likely to be put off, but. Think they would want to have some consultant on board because the one thing the Public Safety Authority has done well is both training for dispatchers and equipment. And so I think that they would want to be putting that out there, whether it's the next year, like right now it'd be FY twenty five, twenty six. But anyway, that's what they were looking at down the road. And so my request is I want a pos from the council. And I also think perhaps that at some point the council needs to talk to your own representatives on the Public Safety Authority about what you want them to do. And what you see the role of Public Safety Authority in the near, this is a three year budget. So just in the next three years, what you see that role to be. I just didn't want to keep the. Public Safety Authority Board in a vacuum. We just haven't heard from the councils.
And what do you think we should do?
I don't want to spend money on an executive director. Uh, we had one and Paca was wonderful, very experienced. But the councils proved to us again and again, they really weren't ready. To succeed any kind of authority. And so I think that we could possibly do some sort of an administrative staff would be nice. But not an executive director quality of public safety expert. Uh, and that we would work on training and hopefully develop the board to be stronger. And that the commitment of Barry Montpelier is either stronger. Or we don't keep the Public Safety Authority. I think it is again, it's at the point we have to make those decisions. But right now I'm just dealing with the the budget primarily. There there was a definite. Crisis, I would say, with the Public Safety Authority. In that today I attended a hearing at the Joint Financial Committee at the State House. And within that was the response is what was going to happen with this application that Montpelier did. Uh, the one that we finally put in for $3.5 million for all this equipment that came out of the needs assessment. For the towers, for all the upgrade of 1990s equipment that's sitting out there in the field. That all of our FAR and all of our EMS depend on. Desperately needs to be replaced. And we reduced that request. To a 2.444 and we thought that the Public Safety Authority. Department of the state was in agreement with that 2.44 request in this application. But in the hearing today, I very clearly heard the commissioner. Not yet ready. Yes, they. Are accepting the application. It has been approved, but it's been put off at least for next year. And they were, the department was awarded money to bring in their own expert to help them evaluate applications like came from Montpelier. Because they feel their own staff doesn't understand the equipment. And so they're going to try to better assess all the applications. They're right now. And we're authorized today through the joint committee to. Give money out to five different citizens, five different. See, I probably have that. Copy of that. Five different agencies. And those five agencies, a Montpelier is like number six. So we're in the phase one that would be. Next year, not this year, in that initial phase, it's a much smaller request from each place. Chittenden County. That originally asked for a lot more is getting a a smaller amount. To help to help their process. Uh, Hartford, St. J, much, most of them are like 200,000, 300,000, 500,000. And they're doing that because their PSAPs, which is the statewide nine one one number. And all the free dispatching those PSAPs do for those 81 communities that get free public safety dispatching. They're wanting to take them out of the state. Dispatchers and put them into these regional. Systems. So if you were in a regional system that would help reduce the PSAP's volume of calls. Because the state can't handle them. They don't have enough coverage of their dispatch. Jobs in Williston and in Westminster to cover all the calls that are coming in from the towns they're doing free dispatching for. So their priority this year is to fund those. Dispatch centers. Who put an application in that will serve. Their. Overload. So literally they're shifting their dispatch calls onto these regional systems and are only funding the regional systems that are helping them out.
And I thought I. Think I recall that. There was, there's been this discussion that. This free dis dispatch. System is essentially going to go away.
That, yes, and that's part of having the regional statewide regional. Dispatch centers is that they're finally seeing that, but it's also because they're seeing a need that they can no longer do it. They literally don't have the staffing. It's just been overwhelming the volume.
And no town would pay. If you got it for free, so.
Right. And so, but so everybody is now going to be have to be paid and that's a shock to everybody's system. But the legislators, as well as the Department of Public Safety are admitting that they themselves need a lot of education. And we start talking equipment and towers and communication and. And the expense of that, they're overwhelmed. And so they feel they do need to educate themselves. They do need to bring in consultants to help them assess all the applications. And it's interesting because they had a scope of work. Criteria on the applications that went into the department, of which Montpelier was one that put it in. And they were all graded and Montpelier was graded. Seventy five, which came out fifth place. But because Montpelier was a much higher need and doesn't displace as much volume in their PSAP. It was moved to a phase one. Yeah. And I, I, this is a lot of information.
Now, this is, this is helpful and.
It's making sense to you. I don't want to put it in the else, but you can ask.
Well, other, other people will have a chance to ask questions too. It's, it sounds. Are, so. If the other agencies are all looking for. On the level of a couple of hundred thousand and we're asking for two and a half million, that's because we're. We're way ahead of them in the process. They're still looking to study and we're ready to to buy and install. Is that right?
And I believe, I don't know with the Chittenden County, but I believe we're the only one that has done a full need assessment of our region. Uh, Chitt County might be closer to 700,000. I I can pull up the numbers if anybody wants them. There's a link through the State House. I realized I didn't have a printed of that.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, some good information that was given to the joint committee today that was helpful.
Anyone else? Have questions I want to raise?
Um, this isn't really questions, just as you're, as you're thinking about this budget development. You mentioned the possibility of bringing in a contractor to work as a staff member to work as an executive director. Or an possibly administrative person. I would just, I would just caution the the authority against that. Because there are pretty. Pretty restrictive laws. Because there are pretty, pretty restrictive laws about when you can hire a contractor and when it needs to be an employee. And I don't think an executive director could ever not be an employee. So that might not be a cost saving measure that's available. That's what I'm just suggesting.
That's a great point. I haven't researched. I was, again, I'm not in favor of putting money into staff. That's a great point. I will, I'll definitely tell the board in between now and tomorrow. I will investigate that. Thank you.
But it, it seems like year after year, we're in the same position of deciding, are we gonna stay in the authority or completely pull the plug?
I know you keep hovering on the pond, you know, get your toes wet, but you haven't jumped in, but you haven't jumped out. So what do you want, folks? You know, guys, please.
Bill, do you have any expertise even shed on this? Or, or not, you have knowledge, whether it's.
I think Donna's analysis of the description of the situation is correct. I was just looking at the uh, the awards. One of them was to Colchester, which is the Chittenden County Regional. And there's their original request was for two point eight six five and it got reduced down to seven fifty seven. So it wasn't that everyone was asking for smaller amounts. Uh, we, our original was three point five, which got reduced to two point four. Also concerning that, you know, in the conversation, members of the joint fiscal did suggest, said that they'd been hearing from people about Montpelier's application and that raised concern. So that, that bothered me. But, you know, certainly we have a public document that their experts are welcome to go over. If they want to go over what our experts went over, that's fine. With regard to CVPSA budget, I mean, that's, I think the question maybe that's on the table is, I mean, obviously this council can't direct anybody to do anything. They're a separate agency as we've stated many times. Uh, but whether we wanted to give any direction to our, our two appointed reps. You know, my question when I saw it was what's an executive director going to do? I don't, not against an executive director, but there, there's no agency to run. There's no employees. There's no anything. I mean, and so I think it'd be good to know what what was, what both communities are paying for. And so my suggestion is that we invite CVPSA in to our December fourteen meeting, which is when we'll be talking about our budget anyway, and have them explain what they're proposing and why and what we're getting from it. And that way we can hear from everybody and have a conversation where everyone can hear the information at the same time. I think City of Barry is considering doing the same thing and inviting the men out there meeting on the thirteenth of December. So they'd be back to back nights.
Sound like a plan?
Yes. And in fact, the Public Safety Authority's annual meeting, which is required by its charter to follow so long after its public hearing on the budget is December nineteenth. So the fourteenth and thirteenth would work very well into that. You'd have a lot of in, interaction between the two, three groups. That would be great.
Anyone have any other thoughts about this? And, okay.
Speaker again, the, uh, you heard about records requests relating that implicate this. Uh, those spreadsheets that Motorola provided, even without the missing numbers that appear on tab one, there's over a million dollars of unfunded in that, in that proposal from Motorola in the way of support network, uh, network management, engineering. This system has never been engineered. In fact, experts have told me that we should scrap the simulcast design that we applied for due to lack of scarcity of frequencies and difficulty in getting new frequencies and design a trunk radio system which allows multiple incidents to operate in different talk groups. So they're not hearing each other's traffic. You can have a structure fire in Barry and a car rollover in Northfield. And all of the dispatch messages to each of those goes to them alone on a trunk system. And because it's so difficult, we're above the A line, meaning getting new frequencies to expand a regional dispatch capacity requires sometimes years of work back and forth with Canada because of the radio interference problems. So, so to have the, oh, the other reason that Montpelier was not awarded in this is the, is the governance. The governance requirements of the RFP were representative governance by the served agents, by the served municipalities. And there's no way that even, even Brian Pete has mentioned in several meetings that CVPSA may be the solution to that in that it is structured by charter. Oh, by the way, the charter requires an executive director. It requires an annual audit. This chair of, has decided to ignore the charter. Uh, and we're so glad that she'll be, uh, term limited out next March. So we may actually get with Doug Hoyt and Donna off the board, we may actually start to see a footing and new towns joining and quit dragging anchor. There's a conflict of interest here. I've raised it before. Montpelier generates four hundred thousand dollars plus in revenue by having a monopoly dispatch center. A regional authority might choose to contract with Montpelier for another couple of years while they get set up, but might logically choose to create a regional dispatch center up in Berlin, for instance.
Okay, let, let me ask you a question. Was the information of, I assume that you've reviewed the, uh, report of the TeleVate study?
I did.
Uh, was the information about this trunk radio system that, uh, that you, uh, talked about, was that available to TeleVate when they did their study and report?
They know about trunks radio, but what they did is they basically adopted work that some of the departments had already invested in. There had already been a proposal from Motorola years ago for a million and a half or two million, million, three quarters. And that was later underbid by half by, uh, vendor for different equipment. I don't think that applies here. So they basically took a pre-sketched design and decided to run with it. They never did any engineering. They didn't analyze. I bet they'll tell you that trunk radio has its advantages, but they didn't, they didn't, uh, do the work. They didn't do a lot of the work. They didn't assess the structural capacity of the towers, the electrical grounding of the towers. You know, they shortchanged just a lot and that's under Donna's watch. Yeah, she loves TeleVate and I pointed out, and y'all have seen my analysis of their shortcomings of their report.
Okay.
So the, uh, two point four million cut grant because engineering is not allowed from the three point six that we asked for, plus the other million and a half that is in the Motorola proposal that isn't funded anywhere starts to make this look like a very precarious and even deceptive. Also, the Montpelier application represents that Northfield is joining in and Northfield's not joining in as a police department. So, you know, there's a, there's almost fraud going on. Once you're made aware of that, you don't correct your proposal and say we no longer have Northfield on board. That's looking like fraud.
Okay, thank you, Chief Pete.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, members of the city council, city manager, assistant city manager, Brian Pete with the Montpelier Police Department. Uh, I, I'll just make it brief. Uh, there are a host of reasons. And, and the context to which my recommendation of a governance model, that CVPSA is that governance model, uh, there's a context there and, and my and, and so since he brought it up, I said, yeah, it, CVPSA could be a governance model, but in the current form, it's dysfunctional and it doesn't work. It would have to be changed to be a, a governance model. And, and, and long story short, the biggest risk to the money that we're getting, that we're looking for right now is in fact attributed to certain members within this organization because they're bringing, they're muddying the waters. The same folks who are, who are, who advocated for us to, to get this, this, uh, this communications infrastructure done are now actively pushing members of the legislature to deny the, this, the very grant that we need. So, so, so there's, there's a lot of moving parts and muddiness and, and the context is being twisted and consorted to, to meet a certain agenda, depending on who you ask. The, the governance model, that that is not why we are not, are looking at it. The governance model for any of them. None of that's been decided. I'm on the working group for the communications, uh, plan as, as, as appointed by the, uh, the governor and legislation. That's not true. So, so all I'll just, we will caution as next month, there, there can be some serious questions asked. But if, if there's any jeopardy to funding, we're shooting ourselves in the foot because we have individuals who are going to members of the legislation saying that Montpelier is not ready to have this grant.
Thank you. Any, any questions for the chief? Okay. Well, um, we're, we're to council discussion now.
Can I clarify?
Yeah.
I don't want to counter most of the things that Stephen has said about Public Safety Authority, but I, I would like to make the statement clear that Kim Cheney was chair for two years, the first two years that we lost our executive director and lived without our executive director. And Kim Cheney was chaired during the year of which we initiated the need assessment and its scope of work. And I became chair the last two years to try to implement it and get money for it. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
And so, so to clarify where we are right now. Well, I have another question that you may know, Bill, you may know, and that is do we have the authority, as a council, do we have the authority to direct our representatives how to vote on stuff like this?
We've done it in the past.
When I was a city appointed one, Tom and I both were directed by council.
Okay, so we think we do. And so what we have a pro, the plan that you're proposing is one, we should, uh, invite the authority to our meeting on the, uh, on the fourteenth. Is there anything else you'd like from us tonight?
Just really think about what you feel its role can be and if it can be useful.
But it's not something, something we have to do and decide tonight.
No.
Okay. Anything else we should talk about? You don't need a vote to ask them to come in. Okay. Thanks, Donna. I, I rely on your expertise and your years of devotion to this issue, uh, as I think about these things. All right. I think we're up to, uh, item number ten, uh, proposal for.
Do you want to go to all the others and then just end with the executive session?
Oh, yeah, we should do that. That's typical. Yep. Uh, we have other business. Is there any other business that we haven't taken up? We're at a council reports. Start at this end.
You got her input here. Not much tonight. The only things I wanted to say were, uh, working at the polls. It was great to see such great turnout. Thank you to the city clerk and team for a really impressive operation with, as we still are with mail in ballots and all that, working out new systems. So it was great to see and hopefully we can get John home soon. But that is great. And I know we'll have lots more time to celebrate Chief Pete, but also just wanted to, haven't had a chance yet to express my gratitude. We'll, uh, miss you. It's really been a privilege to work with you. And as someone who served on the police review committee, I was so grateful for the, just the, um, proactive, positive, um, approach you took to, um, you know, looking at our community and really looking at how we can have the best possible police department and what, uh, you know, I was just really impressed over and over again with how we were able to have productive conversations and build on a lot of, you know, amazing strengths of the department and look for how we can continue to make it better. And a lot of the work to kind of institutionalize a lot of the practices that the department had and leaving it in even better shape than you found it. And we'll miss you and wish you a lot of luck in your next. But I just wanted to thank you because it, it's really been a pleasure to work with you.
I don't have anything other than, um, also for Chief Pete. I actually have a gift here for you tonight. I was hoping you would be here in person and I've been to the station looking for you too. So I have to see you soon, um, before you leave, but I, I wanted to publicly thank you for, um, picking a Los Angeles girl who has a very difficult and challenging relationship with the police department and, um, making that not a thing anymore. And, um, I really appreciate you and I appreciate your presence in the community and I'm going to miss you. So thank you for that gift and just for welcoming me onto city council in such a good way. So I have something for you, but I'll give it to you at another time. So that's all. Thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll go now. I'll, I'll pile on chief and say how much I appreciate the, everything you've done and it's, uh, you, you came in at a difficult time and, uh, you, you were immediately confronted with having to have deal with this, uh, police review committee and it's, uh, that had the potential for being a very, uh, challenging activity. And in many ways, it was a challenging activity, but the fact that you were very open and welcoming of, uh, of this community effort to scrutinize and question and examine what the police department does in a goal, in an, uh, effort to make sure it was better and, uh, and serves a community as well as it possibly could was, I would say exactly what, uh, we needed in a chief and I'm, I'll, I'll be very sorry to see you go. I would also want to say that, uh, again, it was great doing, working out at the polls, uh, yesterday. I, I had one. One of the things that I always enjoy is at the polls and I'm check, checking in voters is, uh, when I get to meet voters who are coming to vote for the first time. They're either young people who've just turned eighteen, had a couple of them, people who are adults who've been living here all their life. And for some reason, they decide, well, finally I'm going to get out and vote for the first time. And we even, I even met one person who was a brand new citizen who was voting for the first time. And so it, it's inspiring every time I do it. Thank you to every, every one of the candidates who, uh, who ran successfully or unsuccessfully. It takes something to put yourself out there and you don't know if you're going to win or not. And so that, but that's what, what keeps our, uh, democracy going. And that's all I've got.
Keep on the, uh, Chief Pete, uh, here. You know, just, just, just say, chief, I, I think you, you came in at a time when, you know, it was a difficult time for law enforcement in America and it still is in many ways, but the, the way you put yourself out there, I remember like the first time meeting you and just sort of a crowd gathering around you. And, uh, just, just having the difficult conversations when it was needed and, and bringing a level of like innovation and community mindedness to this job. Um, and, and really leaving the place, you know, but better than how you found us. And, uh, I, I don't think we could ask anything more. We probably terrorized you quite a bit on council here. Uh, but your professionalism was like, without a doubt there. And I, I think what really spoke to me was talking to, uh, the different officers on the force here and, and just the way they spoke about you, chief. And, um, I, I think that's a real testament to yourself. And I said it to a reporter, but the fact that you were willing to just pick up a patrol shift, you know? That there was never any like, you know, eye management, you know, your staff or anything. You, you rolled up your sleeves and you did a job. So I, I think the department you're going to is very, uh, lucky to have you and it, it certainly our loss. It's going to be big shoes to fill. So thanks so much, chief. Uh, as far as the election, I, you know, very tired. I only had one Red Bull. It's, uh, it was a couple. Obviously want to thank all the voters who came out. You know, it's been a long haul running since, uh, May here and, uh, you know, knocked three thousand five hundred doors. And I think I really gained a different perspective in many areas of this community here and learned a lot and, um, you know, hope to take that with me. Um, I really want to, you know, call out Donna, um, who's been a mentor since I've gone on council five years ago. And, uh, you've taught me a tremendous amount. I, I remember Donna was like, uh, got, well, you know about labor. You don't talk about anything else. But like I worked a lot, coming back, you know, and a lot of them were just sitting next to you and, uh, you know, I mean, it, it was such a, I, I never considered you an opponent. It was a incredibly respectful, no.
It was a incredibly respectful, you know, um, a competitive race. And, uh, you know, I, I think we were all better for, for it at the end of the day, but I think the world of you, Donna. Uh, as well as the, the other folks who were in the race there, uh, Jean Leon, uh, Glenny Sewell and Kate McCann, who will be serving, uh, with me. Uh, but I do want to say, Peter Kelly mentioned at the beginning of it. I, uh, I think if my term had gone until maybe this March, I may have stuck it out, but I, I will be stepping down from council. And I, I think I want to take, you know, it's just the 24 hours. I'd like to take the week to talk to my colleague, city staff here, and try to figure out time to do it with the least disruption there. Uh, I know we have budget coming up and everything. So just want to do what's best for the town here. But obviously I'll be serving the town in a different capacity. The city government issues are very close to my heart after going through everything we've gone through together. Uh, I'd love to stay on our lobbying committee on some capacity. I'd love to stay, uh, I'm an unvoting member anyways on that homelessness task force and see what trees we can shake to get the resources we need to do some of these jobs, uh, at the state level. But, um, I, I really want to say all of you, like, you know, again, you're, uh, an inspiration to me. And, uh, all I've learned, you know, on the campaign trail and with you, uh, hope to take that wisdom, uh, up to the state house as they probably throw me on fish and wildlife and I can't do anything. Congratulations to the mayor as well and onward. Thanks so much.
Uh, well, I'm, I'm going to, um, join in on the, the congratulations and thanks to Chief Pete. I have, you know, I'm the newest member of city council and I have just been consistently impressed with your dedication to the town and, and with your dedication to service and also with your willingness to use words like love when you're talking about police work and law enforcement. And, um, I just don't know that we're ever going to, we're never going to find quite the, the combination of, of strengths that we have in you. So I, I will greatly miss you. I appreciate your work so much. Um, I know it's been really challenging all the way around and I appreciate you kind of hanging in there with us and, um, wish you all the best and, and your next, your next steps. And I also want to congratulate everyone who, who won their elections and also to those who ran in elections. As, um, Jack had said, it's something to put yourself out there. It really is. Um, so I, I was actually reelected justice of the peace. So thanks to people who voted for me for that.
You filed your campaign finance forms for that?
It, it, so this is a job I've been doing for, I think about 20 years now. And I have loved, 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 loved it. And it's, it was a, a big part of kind of prepping me to want to serve on the city council and to understand a little bit about how all that worked. And, um, we did not have 15 people running on the ballot this year for justice of the peace. However, we had a very strong showing of write-in candidates and we had people who were running writing campaigns. So I particularly want to congratulate Morgan Brown and Rosie Kruger and Mark Leopold, who won write-in campaigns and will now be joining us as justices of the peace. And I, I'm hoping that this means two years from now, there will be a little bit more kind of excitement generated around running for justice of the peace. And we'll have lots and lots of people who want to do it and will, um, uh, talk to the, the party, the, the party committees of, um, of our town, the progressive committee and the Republican committee and the Democratic committee. It's not the, the only way to get elected, obviously, but it's a good way to get on the ballot. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Jack, Jack thought it was going to be a short meeting. So, uh, Pete, chief, uh, I do Connor and Casey the same way. I'm calling Casey the first name part of the time. Um, but anyway, Chief Pete, uh, much appreciated. And I'll ditto whatever's, everyone else has said, but also to add my experience with you dealing with the public safety authority. And particularly this last application to the Department of Public Safety. Uh, you've really been pivotal. You really jumped in and something that's got a lot of history and you've just joined at, at a higher level and helped everybody. So I do appreciate that. And I appreciate your family going through another move. Uh, whatever the, the positives are, it's still stressful. So give yourself more time as you go and settle out. And likewise, uh, just wish you well, wish you well. And like, and I want to mention John and all the other people who helped volunteer for the election. It's always a lot of work and a lot of worry. And he hasn't fallen asleep here, but I know he wants to. But, but thank you and really appreciate all the voters coming out. It wasn't as large a turnout as we expected, but it was a good turnout. And as far as being a candidate in a general election, I do feel like we're too partisan. I really feel the two parties have a stronghold because there was very little activity. There were no paper interviews, paper articles. Once the primaries were over, and I think that's a weakness. Uh, but then that's my bias, but I know that Connor and Kate will do a good job. They definitely ran an excellent campaign. Uh, after all, he used to be managing everybody else's campaign. You learn something, huh? And, and so it means the council have, has a lot of big things happening in the future. And so people out there should be thinking about, do you want to run for council? And really think about the issues and start showing up, whether it's, and it's not just the council meetings. You should go to a committee meeting. I went to so many committee meetings before I went to council and it really helps you and grounds you in what are your priorities. So the challenge is out there for all the voters. And I'm still challenging voters to call the state about housing, that we really need the state to be the leaders. They have the authority. I call it, one senator in an article said, the state has the money and the muscle to do housing. Municipals can help. They've got to have leadership and they won't until voters put the pressure on. So use your voices and call the state. They need to deal with homeless as if it was a big flood and make people get housed. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Uh, city clerks report?
Thank all the volunteers, some of whom are right here, uh, for all the help the other day. Um, and thanks to everyone who came out to vote. Thanks to all the candidates for running. Uh, we had almost exactly the same number of voters. It was like 30 some, I think, from the last midterm election four years ago, which is, um, almost spookily consistent. But, um, yeah, anyways, thanks. Thanks for all the kind words.
And city managers report?
Just a couple of things. Um, also thank everyone involved with the election candidates and poll workers and the clerk and everybody. We are fortunate here in Vermont and Montpelier to have these things run smoothly and civilly. And, uh, it's, it's, it is really a, a nice thing. I certainly would add my praise to Chief Pete, but we'll probably be doing more of that later. But I appreciate, I, I know he appreciates the kind words that, that you all said. Uh, we mentioned it earlier. I was going to, uh, mention it tonight, but we did formally promote Kurt Monica to public works director. We're very excited about that. And Zach Blodgett to deputy public works director. So that they're, um, they, as a team will be excellent leadership at PPW. We're excited about that. Um, of course, we've already promoted Kelly to assistant manager. We are interviewing candidates for her, well, still kind of present job and former jobs. He is doing double duty. I'm surprised she's still awake. But, uh, for finance director next Monday, we hope, uh, that there's a, a top candidate in that group. And then, uh, I am meeting with the police department members tomorrow to get their take on where, what they'd like to see for the future in the department, to get that piece of input before make a conclusion on how to move forward on, uh, filling those big shoes, uh, at the police department. So that's what we're happening with our, our big positions. Um, got some great news during this meeting actually, uh, that I found out of that another way group has voted to operate, uh, an overflow shelter at Christchurch this winter. So that's wonderful. Obviously we, uh, will provide them and hats off to the homelessness task force who helped push to make that happen and those members. So that's great. That's, that's, uh, we've got a long way to go, but that's something that's desperately needed. And let's see. Oh, this is a really minor thing, but in our budget schedule, we had left either January 25, which is a Wednesday, or January 26 is a Thursday is our last day. As you know, we've often done Thursday because that's a deadline for petitions. But we didn't actually make a final decision. So in any preference, just because we got to start posting the schedule and all.
I, I'd probably go with Thursday because, because then it's all.
Yep. Okay. Fine. And that's what we will do. 26th it is. And, um, I believe that's it.
Okay.
And don't forget, we have one more topic.
Right, we have one more topic. Item 10, the proposal for housing and conservation project. And this is a motion that we'd probably go into executive session. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion we go in executive session to discuss the potential development of purchasing of property?
Pursuit to one VSA section 317, subjects in 13.
Absolutely right.
And we're having the manager and, and Alec.
And Alec and Kelly, if she'd like to join us.
Okay, and is there a second?
And we're not expecting to take action afterward, are we? I don't think, no.
Okay.
We don't need to come back out and vote. So I'll be the end of the meeting.
Okay. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we'll go into executive session.